Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Washington County Board of Commission Meeting, and thank you all for being here in attendance today. We'd like to excuse our colleague, Adam Snow. He's traveling. It seems like June is one of those tough months. It's kind of a crazy month. We'd like to excuse him, though. As we start our meeting, we're actually honored to have Reverend Alex Wilkie, a retired Baptist minister. So good to see you, Reverend. It always makes my day when you're here. He'll be giving us our invocation. After our invocation by Reverend Wilkie, our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Community Development Director, Scott Messing. We'll go to that point.
Yes, yes, please.
Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend. Appreciate you. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. It's always my favorite part of the meeting. We begin today's meeting with our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a means of expediting the consideration of routine matters. If a Commissioner requests that items be removed from the Consent Agenda, those items are placed at the beginning of the regular agenda. Other than a request to remove items, a motion to approve the items on the Consent Agenda is not debated.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as follows. Item A: Consideration of Auditor Approved Claims for Payment for June 4th, 2025 through June 17th, 2025. Item B: Consideration of Commission Meeting Minutes from June 3rd, 2025. Consideration of Administrative Adjustments is Item C for Real Property. Item D: Consideration of Administrative Adjustments for Personal Property. Item E: Consideration of Proof of Publication of Ordinances 2025-1293-0, 2025-1294-0, 2025-1295-0, and 2025-1296-0, published on Wednesday, June 11th, 2025. Item F: Consideration of Applications for Property Tax Abatements. And that's my motion.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes for the Consent Agenda. Our first item is Purchase, or let's see, Presentation on the Mobile Crisis Outreach Team. Scott?
Of course.
Do we have a, can we drop the screens for the presentation? Let's see. The mic, if the mic, uh...
Get my here in a minute. Hi, I'm Scott Corsai. I'm with Southwest Behavioral Health, and more specifically, I'm the Product Manager for the Mobile Crisis Outreach Team. Next. And also known as MCOT. And thank you for having me, and kind of share a brief message. Take thirty to forty-five minutes. That's a joke. But a real brief. But yes, we're twenty-four-seven in-person mental health crisis support is what our team does. And that's, we respond in teams of two. That's a therapist and a personal support specialist. A personal support specialist is someone who's had lived experience, which is really helpful in those situations. It just makes a huge difference. And there's no charge for our services, other than that you've already been charged, because it's a state-funded program, and you might as well use it. It's paid for through taxes. And we cover, our team covers the five county area, Washington, Iron, Kane, Garfield, and Bieber Counties. And our purpose, a few different purposes. Number one purpose is to help people, right? When somebody's had a mental health crisis, it hasn't always been that you've had this resource. So number one purpose is to help people, and specifically help people in the community and in their homes, because that's the best place, right? And that they could actually stay there. They wouldn't have to go to the hospital, or go to call law enforcement. We want to divert from those things. Divert from hospitalization, divert from law enforcement, and if possible, help that person stay home, because that's the best place. And then the last thing is provide community education just like this. Next. And then some of our common scenarios that we work with is somebody that's feeling suicidal, or somebody that's experiencing psychosis, or a family member that's having either one of those. And then youth behavioral issues. So we work with some really more serious things, and we also work with some stuff that's a little less serious. But don't tell a parent that that's less serious, because it's serious in that moment, and we're happy to help in those situations. And then it's, yeah, there's a lot of things, but depression, anxiety are a couple of things, too. So, next. And some of the services that we offer are in-the-moment crisis therapies. We have therapists, and that's twenty-four-seven. And part of that safety planning, if somebody was feeling suicidal, we could go meet with them and help them to make a plan to stay safe. And that might include like a small safe for medications, or a gun, or things like that. And then parent-child conflict resolution, that's something we often do to, yeah, help in that situation as well. And then we're really familiar with a lot of different community resources. So we refer to a lot of different community resources, and there's 211, which is probably the most, it's putting, pretty amazing 211, has everything. And then we also do consultation for law enforcement and other professionals. So if they have somebody, it's not every day that you work with somebody in crisis, right? Even in law enforcement or safer with therapists. So we will provide consultation for that person that's working with somebody that's in crisis, trying to help them through that. And then who we serve? Serve adults and youth, and such to everybody. We serve everybody. And then we also work with government organizations like schools. So if a school has had a tragedy, and it's affecting all the students, we might work, depending on what the school needs, we might work with that school to help them make a plan of how to address it appropriately. And then, and we do that a few times a year. And then private businesses, if they've had a tragedy that's affecting their employees, we can meet with them as a group and kind of help them through that, navigate it. Like I said, it's not something that you're dealing with a lot, right? It's not like you're trained for that kind of situation, but we are. And then we work with the whole community on occasion. And during tragedies and things like that, we do set up a plan to try to address that. And, next. And then last is how to get in touch with us. The easiest way is through the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline at 988. And that's been going a couple years now. They've had other phone numbers, but that one's the easy one. It's really casual kind of experience. It's not like, yeah, so you can just call up and stay anonymous even. And be like, hey, I want to talk to somebody. Or all the way up to having us respond. So they dispatch us, nine, they dispatches us, as well as your local dispatch. So, yeah, so that's everything. And any questions?
Scott, you can also work with the Crisis Stabilization Center. Is that one of the places you might go and find somebody that you've stabilized or analyzed?
Yeah, and that's one of the, one of the resources that we refer to often, for sure. And that's something that is a fairly new resource in our community as well, where it's, I don't want to speak out of term, but my boss is right here, he can talk about that. But anyway, it's a resource to the community that also is set up to help people in the moment. They could go there and receive crisis help that's not the hospital, right? It's kind of like a step down from the hospital, where same thing where there wouldn't miss, there wouldn't be a charge. I don't know if I mentioned that, but our services, there's no charge for our services. And same as the Crisis Stabilization Center.
Scott, has it been about seven years since the MCOT teams were organized, or has it been about that?
I think about, I would have to look at it, to be honest with you, but about that, yeah.
And then how do you, how do you, you have this huge footprint you have to cover, really? And even though the bulk of your population, eighty percent of them live in Washington County, you still have Iron County all the way out into, you know, the parts of our frontier counties, if you will. So where do you deploy, are you mostly centered in Cedar City, or St. George?
Great question. So we actually have people in St. George, as well as Cedar City. We have two people here, and two people there, all the time, twenty-four-seven, that would kind of go north, or go south, kind of thing. And so, yeah, we have four people that are on all the time, that are going to different situations. So, yeah.
So both myself and Commissioner Almquist have been on the board, right? Southwest Behavioral Health Board. And so I can remember, I was on the board when the MCOT teams first started coming in. I feel that one of the challenges is always getting the word out, right?
Yeah.
People, they might know about it, but then they don't know until they're in crisis, and then you don't really, it's not like you keep that number around. I have seen your team in action, and I felt like they did a really good job.
Great.
In trying to deal with the situation that was in front of them, the best they could. These are, these are difficult situations. How much outreach do you do, for example, to maybe folks that you would interact and partner with, schools? You already mentioned being there at a crisis time, but letting them know about your services. Obviously, you're reaching out to us right now, which is great. Also, our law enforcement agencies, making them kind of, are they fully aware of?
Yes.
Their capabilities?
Yeah, especially law enforcement agencies are. And then I'm constantly doing outreach to other places, giving the same presentation. One thing that I'm involved with is CIT, and that has really opened a lot of doors with law enforcement, to help us connect and help, yeah, so we're, you know, we're like this, you know, and they're really happy to send us a lot of referrals, and we're, they, all the agencies in the five counties know about us, and every dispatch has our contact information. But like you said, it's not something you really think about it until you have to, right? And so I think it's going to be endless outreach in order to meet that need. Because, yeah, you're right, it's not something you think about, right?
Yeah. Well, I want to thank you for coming here today.
Thank you.
And giving this presentation, because I think this is exactly what needs to happen, as far as just kind of making people aware of this service, and so that they can, you know, when they're in crisis, or a friend or family's in crisis, they'll know how to act and who to call. And people should know that you're, you're part of Southwest Behavioral Health.
That's correct. Yeah, we're a division of Southwest Behavioral Health. We have the Department of Southwest. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Well put together.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you, Scott. Our next item, item two, is also a presentation of our Emergency Service Report from Sergeant Jacob Paul. Good to see you, Jake.
So, yeah, this is the incident synopsis for May 6th through June 17th. And before I get into that, I just wanted to say that over half of the calls that we dealt with in this period are all heat-related illness. So people going out without enough water, aren't prepared for it, and as a result, we're having to go out and rescue them. So we had a total of twenty-one calls in the last forty days, basically. Put four hundred and three non-certified man-hours into that, and sixty-three and a half certified man-hours, for a total of four hundred and sixty-six and a half man-hours. And we're up to sixty-eight search and rescue incidents this year, rescued subjects. So far, we are actually trending more towards tourism this year than we have in the past. I think in the past, we've been in the sixty to seventy percent range of people that we're rescuing are from out of county. We're at close to eighty-five percent so far this year. So the majority of the people that we're rescuing are non-residents to Washington County.
Heat-related, or?
Yeah. We've had a ton of heat-related lately, and almost every single one of those have been people that are not from Washington County, that aren't prepared for the environment. So the few highlights that we wanted to go over on that, so on May 12th, at fourteen fifty-seven, we had lost hikers on the Red Reef Trail in the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. So on that one, our search and rescue team responded to a report of two female hikers who've gotten lost. Red Reef Trail, when you get towards the top, splits two ways, and once you get towards the top, there's no markers or anything, and a lot of people have a tendency to go off trail when they start coming back. So that's what happened to them. We got to Red Cliffs Campground, and got our incident command set up there, and then our search and rescue team members began their spawning to their locations. We didn't have a really good idea of where they were at at the time, so we actually had our drone operator put the drone up in the air on that one, and he was able to locate exactly where they were within minutes of putting the drone up. We got a good GPS, and we were able to relay that to our rescuers that were downfield on that. And it made a lot, made it a lot easier getting to that patient, both of them. They were both provided fluids to rehydrate. They had completely ran out of water at that point. One of them had an apparent ankle injury. And as a result of that, we had to use several rope systems to get them down from where they were at, in order to get them down into the creek bed and get them out. And then we used some wheel stokes to get them the rest of the way out there. They both got into the command and declined medical transport at that point, if they were good enough. The next one was another heat-related symptoms on Cottonwood Trail, Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. That was on June 29th, at fifteen fifty-two, and that was a group of twelve individuals between the age of seventeen and eighteen that ran out of water and were experiencing heat-related symptoms. They were about two and a half miles from the trailhead. Three individuals in the party were able to hike back to the trailhead on their own, and arrived shortly after we were there. So we gave them fluids, and then they were able to give us a good GPS coordinate on where the rest of the group was. They, one member of the party was reportedly experiencing worse symptoms than the others, potentially going unconscious. And so because of that, we requested that Star Night come out to help us locate them quickly, and get the ones that were in bad shape out quickly. They were able to locate them and land near their location, and then the two members of the group that were not in great shape were loaded in the helicopter and transported back to incident command. I believe both of them received fluids when they got back to incident command in the ambulance. And then we shuttled the rest of them back with our search and rescue team members with vehicles. Just, we had side-by-side, or rollers that were able to make it up in there that we shuttled them down with, and then we just loaded them up in the team member jeeps and stuff like that, and we were able to get them all back out to the trailhead. All of them declined medical transport after that as well. And then on June 3rd, at twenty-three thirty-one, we had an elderly male on Gray Ranch Road in Pine Valley Mountain Area, really, really remote area of the county. And he had fallen after getting out of his vehicle and wasn't able to get up. And he was able to make contact with one of his family members, and they called in and told us that he needed help. But we didn't have a good GPS coordinate on him initially. We started responding that way, and eventually were able to get a GPS ping on his phone, and had a good GPS on him. And he was, I'm amazed that he got to the location that he did with the vehicle when he was in. And he, yeah, it, middle of the night, pitch black, it took us a while to get to where he was at, and he was still laying next to his vehicle. When we got to him, we were able to get him loaded up and in his vehicle, and get him out of there, and back out. And then he refused medical services when we got him out as well. So he was not wanting any help until he was back in the, in the vehicle. So that was the three highlights from this report. Again, a lot of them were heat-related that we dealt with.
Once you lifted him back in the vehicle, he was fine, huh?
Yeah, we actually loaded him up in another vehicle, and then he gave one of our Star Team members permission to drive his vehicle out for him. So we got him back into the command, and then he hopped back in his vehicle, and didn't want anything to do with getting transported. So, yeah. Any questions about that, or?
No, thank you for everything you do. Appreciate you. Thank your volunteers as well. See you. Our next item is Consideration of Purchase Requests, Ray?
Okay. The first one we have here, this is, there was a misunderstanding on a previous purchase PO. The previous one was to purchase some AC units for the search and rescue barn out at the Sheriff's Office for thirty-six thousand one hundred ninety-seven. It was later found out that we needed to also include the install of these two units. And this portion is a total of twenty-one thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars. For the total project is fifty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. And the next one is equipment fuel for the Rose Department for twenty-six thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and twelve cents. And the final one is for one-inch road base for the paving of one hundred South in Pine Valley. This is approximately seventeen hundred lineal feet with seven hundred and forty feet of pavement. This is the, this portion is the county's matching portion that includes the road base and the prep for the pavement. The property owners are paying for the pavement and expenses that occur in the process. So our portion is twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. And unless there's any questions, that's all.
Well, thank you, Ray. That's a short list today, so.
Thank goodness.
So very good. Alrighty.
Thanks, Ray.
Well, thank you, Ray. Is there any questions, Commissioner?
Nope. I move that we approve the purchase request as outlined by Ray.
I second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. Our next item is Report and Consideration of the 2025 Washington County Tax Sell. Our very own Clerk Auditor, Ryan Sullivan.
All right. On May 29th, we had our annual tax sale, which was uneventful, which that's always a good thing.
It was what?
It was uneventful, so that's always a good thing. We started out with thirty-three properties, and it took a couple of months, but with the help of our county treasurer, David Whitehead, we contacted all of these property owners, and were able to work with them to get them paid up or on a payment plan. There was thirteen that actually went on the sell, but before the actual sell date. They were listed. There was thirteen properties that were listed, but on the actual sell date, there was only one property left. And that property, we had worked with the property owner. They didn't want it anymore, and it's in your packet. It's a little piece of roadway located in Hurricane City. It's about the size of this podium that's just out in the middle of the road, that was probably just a sliver left over from the property owner that lives in the home in front of it. He didn't want it anymore, didn't want to pay tax on it anymore. So he let it go to the sell. No one bid on it. And so that's one item of business we need to take care of today. Looking at the code section in this, there's some language that I need to publicly declare to strike the property to Washington County's name. So this is regarding parcel H-3-2-3-432. And this is the, I need to publicly declare this, that all property here offered for sale, which has not been struck off, to a private purchaser, is hereby struck off and sold to the County of Washington. And I hereby declare the fee simple title of the property to be vested in the county. So that takes care of that. I don't think there's anything we need from the Commission. So the next thing we'll be doing is recording a tax deed that actually moves that property to Washington County's name. And I've been in contact with Hurricane City to, this will probably be on the next Commission meeting, is to approve a quitclaim deed, deeding this particular property to Hurricane City, so that they can have it as part of the roadway.
Yeah, we want to do that, otherwise they'll have us come pay for it.
True. So, is there any questions?
No. Alright. So let's see, do we need to, do we need to accept your recommendations, or?
I don't think so.
No action?
You could make a motion to approve the property being struck off of the county.
Listen to the attorney, not me.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the Clerk Auditor's recommendations in regards to parcel H-3-2-3-432.
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And now, item five is Consideration of the 2025 Certified Tax Rates of Washington County. Ryan?
All right. So we've been working hard, coming up with all the certified tax rates for all the entities located in Washington County. There's around sixty-five entities that my office has to do the certified rates for. But we're here today to talk about the certified rate, certified rates pertaining to Washington County, which we have a few. So the certified rate is what it is. So what we're, what we're doing today is, I'm recommending that we approve the proposed tax rate, which actually equals the certified tax rate, because we're not asking for any additional funds going through Truth and Taxation. So for our general operations, the proposed tax rate is point zero 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 three six one, with a budgeted revenue of fourteen million five hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. I'm going to skip this one and do the last, but the next one we want to talk about is the Library Fund, has a proposed tax rate of point zero 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 one two five, with a budgeted revenue of five million thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. And the assessing, the local assessing and collecting fund has a proposed tax rate of point zero 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 two two three, the budgeted revenue of nine million fifty-nine thousand eighty-two dollars. The last one that's, I think's really exciting to talk about is our General Obligation Bond Fund. We still have one outstanding General Obligation Bond that will be paid off next year. However, it's, it's a non-callable bond, so we can't pay it off early without penalty. But the good news is, is that we have enough money in our fund balances to cover the debt payment this year and next year, so we won't be collecting tax. And I went back almost thirty years, and Washington County's been paying on bond payments. Well, the citizens have been paying. Well, the citizens have been paying for nearly 30 years for general obligation bonds for our county. And there's gonna be a nice goose egg on their valuation notice in their tax bill this year, so that's exciting.
Oh, that is exciting. And so outside of the, the attorney building that's a revenue bond, we won't have any debt or?
Correct. We, we do have, through our municipal building authority.
Yeah.
We do have some debt we carry for others, but it's a pass through. We don't make those other payments.
Yeah, I don't. Very good.
So yeah, that's, that's the proposal that we, I think it's good to know too that we're not, these, these revenues have increased, but any increase in revenue is due to new growth, new homes, new buildings that came online. So there's, there's, there's no new, new tax to a, to a owner, property owner this year, at least as far as Washington County is concerned.
Well, I just want to thank you and your office, Ryan. And this is one thing, when we knew we were going to have a vacancy in, in the clerk auditor's office, this was one thing that kept me up at night, knowing or worrying that somebody wouldn't be able to set the certified tax rate. But I knew one person that worked in the assessor's office who was very familiar with that, and that was Ryan Sullivan. So that's when I talked him into, or I encouraged him to be our clerk auditor, because it is such a critical part of, of what we do here. So important. If you get it wrong, it can have really bad effects. So anyway, thank you. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, or that we accept the sort of, the 2025 certified tax rates as been presented by our clerk auditor, Ryan Sullivan.
Second.
We have a motion in second on item five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Chair, I want to stress that, Ryan, you made a point. If somebody sees an increase on their taxes, they need to look real closely at the portion that we control. When I say control, that we have an effect on, because everyone I talk to in an election here goes, oh, my taxes have gone up tremendously, but they don't look at the source of where they went, where they came from.
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. The valuation notices that we mailed out towards the end of July. And I think I heard our county assessor, Tom Durant, one time say like, you should look for that and like, be like Christmas when you see it. You open that up like very first thing and look at it. It's not that exciting to get, but it's important to pay attention and look at it. Make sure that you're receiving the primary residential exemption if you're living in the house full-time. If you're not, you need to contact the assessor's office like immediately. And do, look at those different entities on there and, and see what they're, what they're doing. And if there's, there's also a column on there, if they're proposing a tax increase that has a public hearing information on it. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
No, no, very good information. Thank you, Ryan. Our next item is item six, which is consideration ordinance number 2025-1297-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County located at approximately 1380 North Main Street near Leeds from the OST 20 zone, open space transitional 20 acre minimum lot size, to the RE 40 zone, agricultural one acre minimum lot size for the proposed parcels one, two, and three, hereafter fully described in this ordinance. Scott?
Thank you, commissioners. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. You can see the three parcels that are highlighted in red. They are located adjacent to the homespun subdivision, which is just north of Leeds. All three of the parcels are undersized for the zone in which they're in. You can see that the two that are in the light green are OST 20 and the small one at the north end is in the RE 40 zone. Because there are three existing lots, the property owner has done a lot line adjustment, which has been reviewed and approved. It's not something, a lot line adjustment doesn't need to go to the county commission for approval, it's handled at a staff level. And also was reviewed by the planning commission. So they did a lot line adjustment, adjusting the three lot lines and then rezoning the three parcels that were rearranged. All three of them will be rezoned to the RA 1 zone, which is one acre minimum lot size. So lot one will be 1.5 acres, lot two will be 1.06, and lot three will be 2.14. And we have will serve letters for all of the necessary utilities or existing utilities are on site. And so the planning commission reviewed it and felt like this was a good request and it brings properties into compliance and allows applicants to move forward with any plans for, for betterment. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval.
Any questions?
Scott, I mean, anytime someone has a company named Redline Excavating, doesn't mean you're going to be excavating.
Correct.
Which is in the new zone, not allowed. I'm just trying to give the neighbors some comfort.
Yes, yeah. So it's, the property is now going to be zoned RA 1, which is residential. So it is not a commercial or industrial use property.
Okay. Well, I move that we approve the consideration for ordinance number 2025-1297-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County located approximately 1380 North Main Street near Leeds from the OST 20 zone, open space transitional 20 acre minimum lot size. Sounds like an echo, you just read this.
Yeah.
But I think our attorney wants me to read it again. And the RE 40 zone, residential estate, 40,000 square foot minimum lot size to the RA 1 zone, residential agricultural one acre minimum lot size for proposed parcels one, two, and three, hereafter fully described in this ordinance.
I will second that motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item six, thank you. Item seven is consideration resolution R-2025-3539, a resolution approving the execution of a memorandum of understanding between Washington County and Dove Center for improving the criminal justice response to domestic and sexual crimes. Trudy, I, I have to apologize. I thought you were gonna be sooner on our agenda, you know, so. If I looked at my agenda, I thought I false advertised. Anyway, time is yours.
I'm Jillian, I'm the director at the Dove Center. And as you probably know, Dove Center serves those who've experienced domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and other forms of assault here in Washington County. We also are the main service provider for King County as well. And Trudy's gonna explain a little bit about what the MOU is, but I just wanted to say quickly, you know, Dove's been serving in Washington County for 30 years. Unfortunately, the need for our services continues to grow, which is why we're seeking out new funding opportunities. So the purpose of this memorandum of understanding specifically is kind of just a formality to allow us to submit the proposal. The proposal would support increased services for justice, specific services for survivors. So one of the greatest benefits that we can have, that I think we could have with this, with this proposal, is that it could include cost to pay for criminal service, or criminal justice services, like directly to legal services, which is rare for survivors to have direct access to legal services. So that would be one of the greatest benefits. And we're just looking for Washington County to support the application that we're submitting.
Most definitely. So is this through the DOJ or Department of Justice? Who, who administers this grant?
Yes, Department of Justice, Office for Violence Against Women.
Okay. Very good. How many years has Dove been in our community? I know it's been here a long time, but 30?
30 years.
30 years.
Yeah, I think we're right at like 32 now, yeah.
What's the capacity? I know you guys are getting ready to expand and that's part of this grant.
Yes.
But what is your capacity normally been?
So we have multiple different programs that we serve survivors within. So within, most people are familiar with Dove Shelter, which we offer, we have our 24 hour shelter. And so we can serve up to 24 individuals at our shelter at a time. Unfortunately, over the last year, I think the current number is, we've had to turn away about 50 survivors this year so far, because we're out of bed space. So like you mentioned, that is why we've started a capital campaign to get a new shelter and so we can expand that, so we don't have to turn anyone away from those like life-saving services. But for our programs as a whole, most people don't, a lot of people don't know that we also have what we call outreach services and our court advocacy program is a part of that. So that's, anyone who calls our hotline and is looking for support, that advocate can answer that phone 24 hours a day. And if someone needs a protective order or they just want to talk about, you know, the options or safety plan, they can come in and meet with one of our case managers or advocates. And a lot of that is included in this expansion and this grant that we're talking about. But I think what was our, in the last year, we've served over 1,300 individuals with, who needed our services.
And do you have services for children? I mean, a lot of times I'm assuming we're talking, because we're talking about female population, right?
Well, we serve women and men. And we, yeah, and we also, I mean, I would say percentage wise, we have a larger percentage of women that access our services, but we've seen over the last 10 years, an increase in men accessing services as well. And we do serve, you know, when a survivor comes in with their children, we have a position that we call youth advocates. And so they meet with the children as well, offer them, you know, as long as their parent approves, safety planning and support and things like that, kind of explaining what's going on to the kids. We also have like therapeutic services and advocacy support for them as well. And then we also have a prevention team, which a lot of people aren't familiar with. And that team actually is able to do, you know, resources in our school system. And so that team goes out and they'll do really amazing classes and groups that are about like, you know, how to create boundaries and relationships, how to know if somebody's safe or unsafe and what to look for for that in a relationship. And so we've seen a lot of really great success from that.
Very good. Thank you for all the good work you guys do. Councilmember?
Commissioners, it's great to see you again today. I help out on the Dove Board and doing legislative policy work and that type of thing. And I'm sure you're familiar with legislation this last year that cut our funding drastically. But there's, there's closer to converging realities that we have to deal with, that we have increased numbers and less money to do it with. So we appreciate not only your consideration for this, but going forward. The work that is done at Dove, it's inspirational to me, because when, when they call or we get referrals to Dove, it really is kind of the last line of defense for a lot of people. And it's not, it is mostly women, but it would be amazing the numbers of how many men seek these services as well. But I, I think going forward, we, we're committed to what we're doing here. We have a great staff. Jillian's been with us for about three years now, Trudy's been with us for a while. We have a great staff and a great board, but we just find that that somewhat limits our ability to serve those in need. And so we're just always going to be asking for whatever, whatever we can do to help build those and, and close that gap, and we're going to do that. So thank you.
Well, I think Commissioner Almquist probably has the same opinion, but having been a, you know, a member of the community prior to even being a commissioner, Dove has a very good reputation for, for the service you do. And you've been kind of an institution here back when you were probably the only thing available as far as resource went. So, so thank you for the service that you give to people to find themselves in this, you know, terrible situation.
Some good.
Would you like me to make a motion? I would love to make a motion on item seven, which is, I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2025-3539, a resolution approving the execution of a memorandum of understanding between Washington County and Dove Center for improving the criminal justice response to the domestic and sexual crimes.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you so much for being here.
And thanks for working with the Children's Justice Center too, because somebody comes to you and they bring their children and say they need help too. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item eight is consider, oh, what?
Is this possible to get the signature by tomorrow?
It is, very much possible.
Tight deadline.
Yeah. Right after this meeting, we'll have a signing party.
Thank you.
So. Item eight is consideration resolution R-2025-3540, a resolution approving the second amendment to an agreement to grant a conservation easement and partial release, a conservation easement in Confluence Park. Jillian?
Hi, Jillian Rose with Utah Division of Wildlife Resources. And we can have a signing party, because I need one too.
Oh, that's right. Stephen told me.
Yeah, hers is worse than mine, so. So what this is, is we've been working with, the Division of Wildlife has been working with Washington County on an exchange of a piece of property out of the conservation easement, in exchange for some property to the conservation easement. And this is our second amendment in timeline. So with this, the, the funds that purchase this property is federal funding. So we are going through all the motions to do all of the, the federal checklist that we have to do in order to propose this to the federal government. And with that, when we did the amendment last fall, we thought June 30th would be a good time to give, be able to close, and that's not going to be possible. So what the amendment is, is just asking that we can extend this, so we can finish the due diligence on this exchange. And that is specific with items that still have to be put out for public comment and then for us to be able to receive an approval letter to move forward with this, the exchange with the federal government. So just timelines there and hitting a, a pretty significant deadline here. And so that's what the amendment is and just needing to do that so we get approval to continue forward on the due diligence.
Very good. Well, Jillian, Stephen Scott from our attorney's office spoke very highly of you. Said you've been doing great work and you're kind of newer, right? You took over?
On this particular project, yeah.
On this project, yeah, yeah. So thank you for your work. I did tell him I'd give you a little bit of a ribbing, because when I first became a commissioner, Bob Zamber, who used to be over at the HCP, brought this to my attention, that they were kind of trying to work through this. And so for, for quite a few years, we've been trying to work through this deal. Now it's really gotten serious over the last, what, probably three or four? But anyway, it will be nice to get this one across the finish line. So thank you for your, your hard work on this.
You're welcome and thank you. So yeah, timeline of the essence.
Because it's really not that big. When you go out on the ground, you're like, we should all just get together and have a signing party. But bureaucracy is complicated and it's hard, so.
It is, and, and our federal partners are kind of in a quandary right now with, you know, changes of different things. And so they were very apologetic to us and it is what it is.
Well, very good. Well, thank you for your work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, move on item number eight, that we approve the consideration of resolution number R-2025-3540, a resolution approving the second amendment of the agreement to grant a conservation easement and partially release a conservation easement in Confluence Park.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes and we will get that signed. Item nine is consideration resolution R-2025-3541, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with DWR regarding the management of Confluence Park. Kevin Bunnell, good to see you here today.
Thank you, commissioners. That's a really long title for an agreement that says we will communicate in a timely manner and meet once a year on Confluence Park.
You know, we should, we should talk to our attorneys about writing these titles here.
Anyway, I, I want to thank the Washington County Attorney's Office, particularly Stephen Scott and then Kyle Maynard, who's our representative for PAG's office, for working out the terms of this agreement. As I mentioned, DWR is committed to working with Washington County regarding Confluence Park through timely communication and at least an annual meeting, as outlined in the agreement. And as the identified point man for the Division of Wildlife on the agreement, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. We re, certainly if we need to, to meet more often than, than annually, we can do that. And if there's issues that come up, please reach out to me and I will do my best to facilitate getting the right people in the county connected with the right people in, in the Division of Wildlife to make sure that we can work through, work through these issues. I don't need a signature today. I will have Stephen send that through for electronic signature and, or, or my office will get, will get that done through, through e-sign in the next week or so. get, will get that done through, through e-sign in the next week or so. Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, Kevin, I just want to thank you. I think this is going to be a great solution to, to any problems in the future. And it's a great piece of property that we all, we have a great partnership with the state and the county. And I was mentioning to Kevin, there used to be a group that would get together with the communities, because this really is, the communities feel a lot of ownership in this park. In fact, I think most citizens don't even know that the county is the underlying title owner of it. And I was suggesting that maybe once a year, we'll get our community partners in the same room as well. I think they'd appreciate that.
We would be happy to be, to be part of that, so.
That'd be great. Thank you. This is going to be great, so.
Awesome. Mr. Chair, move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3541, a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with UWR regarding the management of Confluence Park.
I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item 10 is consideration resolution R-2025-3542, a resolution authorizing the Washington County Community Development Department to adopt and implement a new fee schedule for county alcohol business licenses. Scott? Very good. Anybody who might be, the public that might be viewing this, it's because all fees have to be approved in this manner through resolution as well. So, thank you, Scott, for doing that. Everything looks pretty reasonable in there?
I think you make all the motions with the word wine in it.
Wine.
W-I-N.
Well, yes. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt item 10, which is resolution R-2025-3542, a resolution authorizing the Washington County Community Development Department to adopt and implement a new fee schedule for county alcohol business licenses.
Second.
We have, we have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Scott. Item 11 is consideration resolution R-2025-3542, a resolution approving an award of bid and execution of a contract for the Upper Colob Terrace Road Rehabilitation Project. Todd, it works. Three million dollars is, I know it's a good deal, but it's not a lot.
Five miles.
Oh, well, very good, very good. And so, we're milling it and then we're putting stabilizer in and then, then compacting and then repaving on top of it. Yeah. I kind of miss those.
Good memories.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it's, it's a sign of the times. That road suffers a lot from all sorts of temperature variations. Then you've got trucks that need to get up there that are related to construction or animals that are heavy and it's just not safe for them. So, this would be great improvement.
Well, that's a good question. We won't have to put as many weight restrictions in the early part of the spring, right? Yeah. All before we get it fully. Okay.
Right.
Yeah. Very good. Well, with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2025-3543, a resolution approving an award of bid and execution of contract for the Upper Colob Terrace Road Rehabilitation Project.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item 12 is consideration resolution R-2025-3544, a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Mainline Engineering LLC for Ash Creek Bridge Rehabilitation Project. Todd? So, so this bridge would have been the old highway bridge years ago, right? Old Highway 91. And then, part of the road, the alternative gets submerged in water, so. Okay. But doesn't the bridge, does the bridge get submerged as well or part? Okay. Upstream, that's what I thought. That's what I thought. So, very good. I didn't know how to build it.
Very good. Item 12, then, I move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3544, a resolution approving a professional service agreement with Mainline Engineering LLC for the Ash Creek Bridge Rehabilitation Project.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 13 is consideration resolution R-2025-3545, a resolution approving marketing funding to co-host the International Inbound Travel Association's Board of Directors Meeting and inbound operation retreat. Joy, good to see you. Very good.
Good organization.
Yeah, and they have a long reach. And, you know, it seems like our foreigners haven't, we have had more domestic travelers than we have had, it seems that way. We used to, I know we still have a lot of foreigners too. We expand. Very good. Well, good job, Joy. Any other questions? Well, with that, I will make a motion that we adopt resolution R-2025-3545, a resolution approving marketing funding to co-host the International Inbound Travel Association's Board of Directors Meeting and inbound operator retreat.
Second.
I will, we have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Item 14, which is our final item on our agenda, is consideration of resolution R-2025-3546, a resolution of support for the Chibwood Band of Paiute's application for federal funding to promote economic development. Devin?
Yes, Commissioners. The county received a request from the Chibwood's Band of Paiute's for a letter of support. They're applying for some funding that's available through the Economic Development Administration, federal, that would provide some funding for some strategic planning for economic development. This resolution would approve the issuance of the attached letter that you have before you. It's a letter of support for their application.
Very good. You know, it's, I can't say enough good about Mark Echohawk that works and coordinates with our local Chibwood Band. Frankly, they're doing a really good job on economic development and I think it's going to make them more prosperous, create more opportunities for them, so.
Yep.
You know, normally, these are just kind of redo them, but I enthusiastically want to do it because I think, I think they're doing a good job, so.
I think you're seeing a lot of change out there and I think you're going to see them be even bigger players in the county in the future. So, it's, it's good to see them looking at the long term.
True. Mr. Chair, move that we approve resolution number R-2025-3546, a resolution of support for the Chibwood's Band of Paiute's application for federal funding to promote economic development.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And as we conclude our meeting, it's kind of a sad day. The Community Education Channel is, is ending. It's kind of a sign of the times, I guess. Cable is, is going away and TDS, it was TDS, right? Those are major sponsors. So, Marcus Farnsworth, who works both with Community Education Channel as well as the college, university, he's been so good over the years to kind of be here and set up cameras. I'm not sure what we're going to do. I don't know if we have a plan B. Somebody's going to have to figure it out.
Come out and take a bow.
We should have him come out from the back.
Yeah, Marcus, are you back there?
Who is it? James.
James.
Oh, James. Huh?
James.
James, come on out.
Come say something for the record.
Well, how come I got it mixed up with Marcus? That's why. It looks like, I've been thinking you're Marcus for all, for a long time.
Better than that better? Can hear me now?
Perfect.
If we can get this mic working really good, smooth sailing here. I, you guys can handle it, no problem.
Okay.
Anyway, yeah, it's a sign of the times. I'll be moving over to the university, mostly in athletics, working, doing their athletic events, so, which is kind of what I've been doing a lot of lately anyway. But that's mostly ESPN work, which is kind of exciting, but, yeah.
You guys do an amazing job. I think it was, was it last year? Anyway, we, we had you guys, I think we've had your crew out a couple times doing stuff at the fair. And, and the way you guys handle just the, the different camera angles, putting it up on the big screen, I could tell you guys were professionals.
We love doing the rodeo especially, and hopefully that's in the future. I've already talked to the athletic director and got approval that we can work it out between us and can make something work there because we, we still have the van, we still have the capability. We've done a lot of rodeos in our day, so. That, that's speaking for the crew personally. We've worked with like Steve Lemon and those guys over here, come on a lot of rodeos from Denver to Chicago, all over.
Yeah. Awesome. And so, community, the community channel is going away then?
So, the, the community education YouTube will just change names. We haven't quite figured out the rebranding of it. We'll, we'll keep it because there's a lot of content on it. It'll be rebranded something towards the university media studies specific. So, we'll keep that because there's a lot of stuff on there. We don't want it to just disappear.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it'll still be there. It'll still kind of exist in some form. We're still working with the students. We're still got the classes at the university. If anything, this is an opportunity to grow that program and build some, because the, I can't even tell you how much has changed since I started doing this. When I started doing this, I was loading film into cameras, to the high-speed cameras up on the mesa. So, it's changed a lot. It's going to continue to change. This is one of those things that's not going to go away, live media, because the bet, the betting money just got to sports. Like, it's there, it's legal now in most places and that's a lot of money. Netflix is in on it, Apple's in on it, so. It's not going anywhere. We need to develop people that can come right out of school and be able to go do it, so.
Well, ESPN means extra special political nerds. So, you've had that experience and we're just waiting for our name, image, and likeness money as well.
Right.
So, see Victor's face on his shirt.
It's, to be determined. I appreciate the opportunity to have been here doing this with you guys.
So, how many years, how many years have you been doing it?
Ten years, sitting in, in your guys and St. George and Washington City meetings.
For 10 years, I thought your name was Marcus.
I feel like I could.
That's terrible.
I feel like I could make good decisions as far as it goes and like, like what you guys do, but I don't know that for sure. But I feel like I have learned a lot about the community and how it works and.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, you've been awesome. We have to take a picture before, but we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Thank you, Joyce.
Well, with that?
Move to adjourn.
Sir James? This is terribly embarrassing. You have a brother. Your brother Marcus wants to be a brother.